Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of City Council on Tuesday, October 22, 2024. Would a clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland. Mr. Coghill.
Here.
Ms. Gross. Mr. Mosley.
Here.
Mrs. Kelsmith. Mr. Strasburger.
Here.
Mrs. Warwick.
Here.
Mr. Wilson.
Here.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Here.
Six members present.
Thank you very much. Please rise for the pleasure of allegiance. Remain standing for a moment of silence. My pleasure allegiance. Thank you very much. Our next order of business is to amend the agenda. Is there a motion to amend?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda has been amended. Our next order of business is proclamation. And I'm gonna take the privilege of going first. And so will all those here for the Navy Fleet Day please come forward. Commander, Controller, if you would like to come forward as well. And all those here. Please. Before reading the proclamation, it is, I've learned recently how important, which I didn't fully know or appreciate, how important our city is to our Navy. And we have a new fleet, a new vessel that's gonna be named after our city. We have parts that are actually being built here in our city. And we have many, many residents who serve in our Navy who are from this city. So we just wanted to take a moment to thank you all for your service to our country and recognize the tremendous work that you all do. Whereas the United States Navy protects and defends America on the world's oceans around the clock and is ready to always defend America, preserve economic prosperity, and keep the seas open and free. And whereas the United States Navy is instrumental in ensuring the safety and security of more than 52 billion in annual exports from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Whereas more than 8,000 active and reserve force sailors currently in the Navy are from Pittsburgh and the surrounding area. And whereas the latest USS Pittsburgh, LPD 31, a San Antonio-class amphibious transport dock would be the fifth to be named after the Steel City. Whereas the amphibious transport dock, also called a landing platform dock, are warships and embark transport and land elements of a landing force for a variety of expeditionary warfare missions. Whereas our vessels have served in our name, the first serving in 1861, an ironclad gunboat used during the American Civil War, the second in armored cruiser used during World War II, the third, a Baltimore-class cruiser that supported the landing of Tu Hima during the World War II, and fourth, a Los Angeles-class submarine used from December 1984 to August 2019. Whereas US Navy Rear Admiral Thomas J. Anderson, Program Executive Officer for Ships, will be in Pittsburgh from October 20th to 23rd, 2024, to promote the naming of the USS Pittsburgh with corporate civic government education, community service organization, and veterans of the US Armed Services. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and honor the United States Navy for the opportunity to engage and educate Pittsburgh about the Navy, its people, and its importance to national security and prosperity. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh, Mayor Gani, and the Controller Heisler do hereby declare Tuesday, October 22, 2024, to be Navy Fleet Day in the City of Pittsburgh. May we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you Pittsburgh City Council for honoring the Navy with this special proclamation. And a special thank you to Rachel Heisler for efforts to make this day a special one. It's great to be back in Pittsburgh, especially following a Steelers win the other night, to speak with you about the world's greatest Navy in the future USS Pittsburgh. As a maritime nation, the seas are the lifeblood of our economy, our national security, and our way of life. Your Navy, America's away team, is a force deployed around the world 24/7, 365 days a year, to preserve the peace, respond in crisis, and win decisively if called upon in war. From the seabed to space, your Navy promotes prosperity, deters aggression, and protects the American way of life. With the naming of this fifth historic USS Pittsburgh, the Navy honors this city's storied history of service and support for our military. From the arsenal of democracy in World War II to the innovation hub of today, we rely heavily on the robust Pittsburgh Defense Industrial Base to aid us in fielding the world's most capable ships. To man these ships, the citizens of Pittsburgh have stepped up to serve in military uniform and have done so with great distinction. I know that the legacy will continue in the future USS Pittsburgh as she is constructed with products from the region and likely to have sailors serve aboard her who hail from the region as well. How cool is that? We are committed to keeping you updated on the status of your ship as construction continues and ultimately building a strong bond between you, your ship, and the Navy crews that will operate her over her life. In closing, we are grateful for all you do in support of our Navy, and we look forward to celebrating USS Pittsburgh with you as we bring your highly capable ship to life. Go Navy, go Pittsburgh. Thank you for your time today.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much to City Council for honoring the Navy today and commemorating the USS Pittsburgh. I'm a proud Navy sister. So as much as I love to be here as your City Controller, I'm more proud to be here as a Navy sister today. Thank you to Admiral Anderson and his team, and everyone here who has served in our armed forces. Thank you, and thank you, City Council. Go Navy.
Go Navy. One more, go Navy.
Go Navy.
One more.
Go Navy.
I got you.
One more, please. Thank you. One, two, three.
And Councilman Wilson, I believe you have a proclamation. Pastor Thorpe and all of those here, please come forward. Yeah, please come, please come around to the left of Councilman Wilson.
All right, as we're gathering, good morning, everyone. I have to mention something. I know we just got done with the proclamation there. They've all left, but I heard that the Pittsburgh ship, the USS Pittsburgh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be decked out with some Pittsburgh stuff. I thought it'd be kinda cool if like Pittsburgh Dad just like ran around the ship a few times. Took a video of Pittsburgh Dad saying if it was up to par or not. But I missed the opportunity to say that joke when they were here. All right. So thank you all for being here. And we're, not only are we joined by, you know, this proclamation for Dr. Thorpe, but we're also joined by Judge Leah Williams Duncan. And welcome her to our chambers. I think the last time you were here, it was when I was getting sworn in. So it's great to have you back. And I just wanna say a few things. I've only recently met Dr. Thorpe, but you know, I think in government, we often think that we can solve everything by replacing someone's street or sidewalk or fixing up their park. And there's a lot more to the community than that. And you know, I'm proud to be here, in honor to, you know, to read the proclamation and, you know, officially congratulate Dr. Thorpe for all the work that you've done for your community. Whereas Dr. Lola M. Thorpe relocated from Philadelphia, won't hold that against you, to Pittsburgh, PA, to minister with her husband, the late Bishop Eugene M. Thorpe, Sr., in 1968. And whereas in March 1973, Dr. Thorpe and her husband founded a new church where Dr. Thorpe served as a co-pastor. Whereas after retiring from the Pittsburgh Board of Education, she devoted her life to full-time ministry. And whereas during Dr. Thorpe's many years in ministry, she established the interdenominational prayer luncheon, numerous church groups, and has hosted a weekly television program, Women in Ministry, as well as her own radio show entitled Moments of Inspiration for more than 10 years. She is the author of When God Gave My Daughter Back, which was published in Purpose Magazine. And whereas among Dr. Thorpe's proudest accomplishments is the Lola M. Thorpe Scholarship and the Noble Women Class that she taught for more than eight years with a curriculum for hurting, transitioning, and growing women. Whereas in 2006, Dr. Thorpe became the lead pastor at Northside Institutional Church of God and Christ. And whereas Dr. Thorpe's growing congregation relocated in the Northside in 2011. And whereas Dr. Thorpe has received many accolades and awards during her years of ministry, such as the 2011 Women of Excellence Award and the Pittsburgh Circle of Courage Award. And whereas after more than 50 years of serving the Northside, the City of Pittsburgh and the faith-based community, Dr. Thorpe will be celebrating her retirement on October 26, 2024, at the Central Northside Banquet and Event Hall. So now therefore be resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize and congratulate Dr. Lola Thorpe on her retirement and her impact on Pittsburgh's Northside. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October 26, 2024, to be Dr. Lola Thorpe Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And any of your guests are welcome to make comment and, you know, especially Dr. Thorpe, if you'd like to come forward and make comment.
Give her the wireless mic.
Oh, yeah. It's already on?
Here we go.
Thank you to the Council, City Council. I honor you today. I want to thank you for this proclamation. I want to thank you for allowing me this privilege and this opportunity. And I appreciate this so much. And during my time of sharing and caring on the Northside of Pittsburgh, it has been a time of love and fellowship and engaging with the cares and concerns of the people, not only of the world but of Northside. And today I say thank you and I appreciate this honor. I want to thank Councilman and Attorney Leah Williams Duncan and all those who've come to share this moment with me. Thank you so very much.
Councilman, can I say something?
Yeah, please.
I just wanna also thank you for sharing your granddaughter with the City of Pittsburgh, Marina, who worked in Reverend Burgess's office for many years. Thank you. You taught her well.
And Councilwoman Smith?
Good morning. Bobbene Patel and guests, please come forward. You all look so amazing. You wanna come up here, Bobbene? I'm just gonna say my staff left a lot of sticky notes, so I didn't mispronounce anything. So I said to Bobbene, how about you read this, and then I'll... I'll read the end.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, so that sound good?
Wonderful. Hi, everyone. My name is Bobbene Patel. I just wanna start off by saying thank you to Councilwoman Teresa Kelsmith for having us here today and receiving this honor of the proclamation. And thank you to City Council for being here. And I'll start off by reading. So whereas BAPS Swaminarayana Sanshta is a worldwide Hindu denomination dedicated to fostering faith, inspiring service, and promoting better living. And whereas His Holiness Brahmswami Maharaj, 1921 to 2016, established the first BAPS Hindu Munder in the United States of America on August 4, 1974, in New York City. And the year 2024 marks 50 years of service and faith in the United States for BAPS. And whereas, over the last 50 years, BAPS has grown to over 100 Munders across the United States. These Munders offer a welcoming and spiritual space for thousands of families, as well as worship, fellowship, communal meals, education, and activities for young and old, creating a true home for the faithful. And whereas, BAPS Munders offer youth activities that encourage and mold young people to live lives of integrity and character that reflect our highest ideals. And whereas, following in the example of His Holiness Mahanswami Maharaj, the volunteers of BAPS have answered the call to serve through support for those in need, a variety of community efforts such as health fairs, food drives, or disaster relief work, and have done so humbly, selflessly, and inspirationally. And whereas, BAPS Munders have a storied history of helping immigrants to the United States retain their connection to their faith, but fully embrace and join in American civic life. They have added to the rich tapestry of diversity that makes the City of Pittsburgh in America a beautiful place to call home. And now for, now, therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize BAPS Swaminarayana Sanshta on the organization's commitment over the last 50 years to selfless service in communities across the United States, including the City of Pittsburgh, and extend to BAPS volunteers a sincere appreciation for their meaningful contributions to others.
Thank you. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 22, 2024, to be BAPS Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Sorry.
That's fine.
Honorable mayor, esteemed council members, distinguished guests, on behalf of BAPS, we wanna thank you for the proclamation.
The mic's not on.
Thank you for the proclamation. And we are here for the, like, we have a small temple here in the Pittsburgh, in Koreopolis.
Yes.
And we are all volunteer who are doing the volunteer service in that PSPS Pittsburgh Munder. And finally, we inviting to you all, we are celebrating a Diwali on November 3. So if you can, please come and celebrate the Diwali with us. Thank you.
Do members wanna come forward for the photo? And we'll have a presentation after this in the back of, in the conference room for members that wanna join us to learn a little bit more. Had all these sticky notes. Now, every October, I do something to recognize domestic violence and breast cancer awareness. And one of the places that I know do amazing work across this world, to be honest with you, is Catholic Charities. They are, I mean, a lot of people know about Mass, they know about different things that are said, but they don't, a lot of people don't recognize the work they do to help so many people. So would you please come forward for your proclamation? I just wanna thank you all for everything you do on so many different levels. I think it's the largest charitable organization in the world, last I checked. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Whereas Catholic Charities has collaborated with trusted human services partners to offer options for women escaping domestic violence and facing homelessness in downtown Pittsburgh. And whereas understanding that neglect and violence threatens well-being on multiple levels, they work with, to find solutions for issues including, but not limited to, restoration of dignity, securing replacement identification, crisis intervention, safe and stable housing, basic essentials, emotional well-being, life skills, and job skills training, and medical and dental services. And whereas recognizing that pregnant women are among the most vulnerable, at-risk members of our communities, Catholic Charities also provides essential baby supplies and supportive counseling services. And whereas on November 21, 2024, Catholic Charities will host the grand opening of Compassion Corner in downtown Pittsburgh, which will serve as a point of service to provide immediate aid, resources, and appropriate referrals in order to guide those in distress along the paths towards long-term and long-term self-sufficiency. And whereas for more than 115 years, Catholic Charities has served the Diocese of Pittsburgh and has welcomed any person in distress regardless of background or story, prioritizing immediate need, especially those at risk of harm. Within the context of emotional and physical safety, they then reframe each need as an additional, as an invitation to partner with them on the path of stability and empowerment. And now therefore be it resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby recognize Domestic Violence Awareness Month and honor Catholic Charities for their work they do in protecting victims of domestic violence and other crisis situations. And be it further resolved that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare Tuesday, October 22, 2024, to be Catholic Charities Day in the City of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
On behalf of the board and the member and the staff of Catholic Charities, just wanna say thank you to the City Council and to Councilwoman Kelsmith. At Catholic Charities, we try to treat everyone who comes to our door with dignity and compassion. That's especially in the case of those the most vulnerable, including victims of domestic violence. So again, thank you. We, as Councilwoman mentioned, we have our new building downtown opening up next month. We invite everyone in City Council to attend. We'd love to show you what we're doing. Expansion of our services for healthcare, dental care, mental wellness, I mean, needs of those in downtown and throughout the city. So again, thank you very much.
And we have one. And we have one to be read into the record.
Councilman Lavelle presents, now therefore be it resolved, that the Council of the City of Pittsburgh does hereby declare October twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four to be Judge Joseph K. Williams, the third day in the city of Pittsburgh.
May we have a motion to approve?
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Our next sort of business is public comment. I would like to remind everyone that the rules of council state that comments are limited to matters of concern, official action or deliberation which may be before City Council, but any will not be permitted. After your call, please restate your name, provide your neighborhood for the record. You'll be given three minutes to speak. Our first registered speaker is Dr. Ronaldan Miller.
Dr. Ronaldan Miller, Bell Silver, candidate for president, two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-eight. This is an email I sent to the clerk yesterday. Clark Baskin, clerk of the city. In two thousand twenty, I founded the Global Information Intelligence Network, the GII-N, to bypass established offline and online media and to create citywide Pittsburgh nationwide and worldwide connection in a calmer way that increases objectivity and decreases subjectivity in assessment of any problem. I, the GII, CGSII, and GIS accomplished this goal by interpreting the best evidenced information on a problem at the highest level of intelligence from the twenty-one primary disciplines. Fusing them produces a global form of overall intelligence that individuals and institutions can apply to a subject or object. I invite citizens and government representatives in Pittsburgh and elsewhere in cities inside and outside the USA, including Delhi, for conversation generally and for comment on specific issues in the material, social, and human sciences and arts for solving our problems. I, the CGSII and GIS, consider such conversation and comment to be public. The GII-N is a primary information and intelligence vector out of the Center for Global Studies International Interdisciplinary CGSII and its policy creation extension, the Global Intelligence Society GIS. I founded the CGSII nineteen ninety-nine and this GIS two thousand ten. The email GII-N contact is globalinfointelligencenetwork@gmail.com. The newly completed GII-N website link is HTTPS colon slash slash forward slash globalinformationintelligencenetwork.net slash. My email remains cgsii.rlm.globalintelligence@gmail.com. No information or intelligence or Pittsburgh local, Pittsburgh state, or U.S. national security intelligence that is classified by the government at any level flows via the GII-N. I, the CGSII and GIS, repudiate hacking. The CGSII and GIS stress the primacy of information that is publicly acted and or articulated, that is witnessed and or recorded, and that is accessible to all. Misinformation, unintentional untruths is secondary in stories that require evidence, invective and caricature tertiary, and more likely express disinformation, intentional lies. We want the citizens to get better information. I, the CGSII and GIS, do so in at least five non-U.S.-American English languages: Hausa, Nihongo, Espanol, Hindi, and Deutsch.
Thank you very much. Our last registered speaker is Ikahana Halma Kena. If you are speaking, we cannot hear you and it does not appear you're on mute.
My apologies. Greetings and good day. My title is Ikahana Halma Kena. I am the Grand Inca of the Aircock Confederacy of Average Native American People. And today I would like to share my sentiment about the Chief of Police. Since the City Council approved Larry Scarrato's budget and salary, you would also have the power, any authority, to reduce his salary since he chooses to reduce his hours in order to referee college basketball games. In my opinion, under a different administration, the story set slash headline would have read much differently. Police chief fired for the misuse of company time. Instead, Mayor Agany used isolated data as an excuse to support Chief Scarrato's actions. I am concerned that this sets an unfair precedent that other fellow officers would not be able to enjoy the privilege. A pseudo-reduction in crime is not a justifiable reason to allow him to abandon his responsibility to the city of Pittsburgh to protect and serve as a full-time officer slash chief that he was hired to be. I'd like to explain my comments about the isolated data used to represent a reduction in crime. During the peak of COVID, cities across America experienced dramatic rises in crime. From two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one, Pittsburgh saw a forty-six percent increase in shootings. In two thousand twenty-two alone, the city had seventy-one homicides, its highest number in decades. One-third of these homicides were teens. But a reduction expressed and acknowledged gives a false sense of security and falsely represents the data expressed as a reduction. Because we know COVID timelines caused crime to rise, we had a problem in this city before COVID. COVID only exacerbated an already out-of-control crime rate. And now we're looking at it as if there was a reduction. And we all know that because of COVID, things got worse. And so now crime is back down to its unfortunate normal numbers. I just wanted to express that today and I wanted to give you all something to think about and be more equitable about how you apply your judgment for Chief Scarrato. Thank you for your time. Have a wonderful day.
Thank you. That exhausts our list of registered speakers. If there's anyone in chambers wishing to speak, please come forward at this time, provide your name, neighborhood for the record.
My name is Yvonne F. Brown. I live at seven fifteen Mercer Street. That's the high rise right at the top of Befford, that big tall building, it was twelve floors. Last week when we were here, Mr. Lavelle, the very last speaker, the woman came and she spoke, she says, "Mr. Lavelle, God loves you and so do I." And she said they were complaining about what you have not done, what you promised that you would do. And she said, "God loves you and so do I. We're not dumping on you, we're telling you to follow, to do your responsibilities." And I want to say myself, I'm praying God loves you and I'm trying hard. I'm trying. I want just to understand that I come down, I've been coming down here for twenty-seven years, and I'm in a situation where I'm living in a building, where I'm being threatened, I'm being harassed, I'm being chased around by a woman whose mother lives in the building who has said, "As long as my mother lives here, I'm coming." She beat a woman and mother and daughter with a hammer, okay? She just recently, about two or three weeks ago, beat a man with a stick. She's not allowed on the property. She has threatened me, she said, "Mrs. Brown better keep her mouth shut." I want you to understand, it was about six women, I'm the smallest sum of all. That's why I believe she sent her big, her, her mother, a huge woman, come and threaten me, says, "Mr. Mr. Coghill, I blame you too because you knew, you saw a run-up on me. You didn't come and tell the mayor." So the mayor's coming to the building, giving out proclamation and buy the plaque for Saludine's brother who just came back in the city of Pittsburgh, hasn't even been in the building a year. I'm cleaning around the building, he's cleaning up there, August Wilson, and they give him a plaque. I asked the mayor, "Mayor, please tell me." And he's like a buffoon to me, laughing and hollering at me, like I told him, "You have been given much and much is expected from you. Anytime you making a hundred thousand dollars a year and then you can come and give a plaque to a ex-politician, he's now on the board, give him a plaque." And I said, "Who told you about it? You got a problem with it, Ms. Brown?" I said, "Yes, I do. If August Wilson had been living, he would have a problem too." He told me, "Ms. Brown, keep coming down. Tell your story because it's not his history." So we're in the building while he's giving the mayor, our black mayor, giving proclamation, buy the plaque, and the woman is upstairs beating us down. They take her, if the police take her, she just waits till they leave and she walks right back in the building. Uh, the mayor, our, when our manager leaves, she's going one way and she coming right behind her. I'm tired, I'm tired. I'm being harassed, I'm being threatened.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, special waking sunshine. How's everybody? You all right? You okay? First of all, I'd like to return to send Bernie Rudy Hex's curse to sin towards me, one hundred million billion googolplex in Jesus' name I pray. Here's a prayer. Dear Father, thank you that you are my Savior, my Lord, my Provider, my Healer, and my Deliverer. Thank you for your word that says you have given me the power to keep calm in times of adversity. Help me stay in peace and know that you can make things happen that I never could. Thank you for providing a place where I can rest in your grace and strength to fight my battles. I will keep my peace by keeping my mind stayed on you. In Jesus' name, amen. It's amazing how there's forty-seven thousand of us out here on the street homeless, just trying to live in peace, and we're still being harassed on the street. It doesn't make any sense. And I'm gonna use the Pittsburgh Jazz Festival as an example. I have all this stuff and I'm on the street. I laid down my blanket, took my shoes off, literally wiped off my feet, ate two sandwiches, two bananas, and drank two or three waters in like twenty to thirty minutes, waiting for Average White Band to come on. I was in front of the jazz stage, which Average White Band was on the other stage all the way at the end. Now, it was twenty minutes left for the band that was on to perform. After they performed, nobody announced that Average White Band was all the way at the other end of the street. Secondly, here they come, like thirty minutes of me literally sitting on my blanket in the street, asking me if anybody had searched my bags. Now, I was already out on the street for thirty minutes and I felt like I was being harassed. It has to stop, y'all. We just want to live in peace. Why we can't do it? Y'all already got us on the street, like literally. It doesn't make any sense. I'm determined to live in peace. I'm not arguing with nobody, I'm not fighting with nobody, I don't care what anybody took from me, I don't care. Like really, whoever is attacking me wants me to care real bad about what they've done, taken, where it's at. I'm sorry, I live in peace, I'm feeding the birds, I'm going to sing a song, I have gifts, there are a lot of things that I'm doing while I'm waiting for everything that belongs to me to be returned. "When the wicked thrive," Proverbs twenty-nine sixteen says, "so descend, for the righteous will see their downfall." Proverbs twenty-three says, "It is to one's honor to avoid strife, but every fool is quick to quarrel."
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please. Seeing no further speakers, we'll turn to the presentation of papers, beginning with Councilman Sharland, Chair of Human Resources.
Morning, Mr. President, new to papers.
Morning, thank you. Councilman Coghill, Chair of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Number Ten Fifty-Eight, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget, and the Department of Public Safety to enter into an agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency for the purpose of receiving grant funds from the COVID SFR local law enforcement support in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars for records management system software and training and data integration.
And Councilman Gross, Chair of Innovation, Performance, Asset Management, and Technology.
Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Gross presents Bill Number Ten Fifty-Nine, Resolution, Amending Resolution Eight Fifty of two thousand and twenty-one, which authorized the City of Pittsburgh and the Department of City Planning to enter into an agreement with MAHA to provide a building benchmarking management platform software solution by adding funding for contract year two thousand and twenty-four and increasing the total cost by eleven thousand two hundred fifty dollars for a new total cost not to exceed ninety-one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. And Bill Ten Sixty, Resolution, Amending Resolution Seven Seventy-Seven of two thousand and twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the director of the Department of Innovation and Performance on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into an agreement or agreements or amendments thereto with Risk Factor LLC for a subscription to Risk Factor database for all data and hazard layers for all perils and all parcels in the city of Pittsburgh, enabling support of city departments and planning for weather-related hazards by increasing the approved amount by twenty-five thousand dollars for an amended total cost not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars over two years.
And Councilman Mosley, Chair of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number Ten Sixty-One, Resolution Providing for the Execution of a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the Urban Redevelopment Authority of Pittsburgh for the Performance of Certain Work in Connection with the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five Community Development Block Grant Program and Providing for the Payment of the Cost Thereof Not to Exceed Six Million Two Hundred and Forty-One Thousand Dollars for All Council Districts. Bill Ten Sixty-Two, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements with the URA of Pittsburgh Designating URA as the City's Agent for Administration of the Two Thousand and Twenty-Four, Two Thousand and Twenty-Five Home Investments Partnership Program, Cost Not to Exceed One Million Nine Hundred Ninety-Five Thousand Five Hundred and Sixty-Nine Dollars All Council Districts. Bill Ten Sixty-Three, Resolution Authorizing a Cooperation Agreement or Agreements Providing for the Transfer of Funds Not to Exceed Twenty-Nine Thousand Eight Hundred Seventy Dollars to the City of Pittsburgh Equipment Leasing Authority for the Purchase of Vehicles for Use by the Office of Community Health and Safety. This expenditure is associated with grant funds that the city will receive from the Bureau of Justice Assistance, BJA, Grant Funds. Bill Ten Sixty-Four, Resolution Approving Execution of a Contract for Disposition by Sale of Land Between the URA of Pittsburgh and the Pittsburgh Land Bank for the Sale of Block Twenty-three F, Lots One Ninety-eight and One Ninety-nine, in the Twenty-Fifth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh, Carrington Street and Alpine Avenue, Council District Number One, at no cost to the city. Bill Ten Sixty-Five, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the Publicly Owned Properties in the First Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block Eleven K, Lots Two Seventy-One Three and Two Seventy-One Ten, Two Thousand Thirteen and Two Thousand and Five Boulevard of the Allies, Council District Six, at no cost to the city. And Bill Ten Sixty-Six, Resolution Authorizing the Pittsburgh Land Bank to Acquire All the City's Right Title and Interest, if any, in into the Publicly Owned Property in the Twelfth Ward of the City of Pittsburgh Designated in the Deed Registry Office of Allegheny County as Block One Twenty-Five M, Lot Two Ninety-Seven, Hamilton Avenue, Council District Number Nine, at no cost to the city.
And Councilwoman Sarisa Kail Smith.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Kail Smith presents Bill Ten Eighty-Four, Resolution Authorizing Renaming Reem Recreation Center to Dunlap Family Center. Bill Ten Eighty-Nine, Resolution Authorizing Council's Consent to an Extension Pursuant to nine twenty-two point oh-five point D of the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances of the Deadline for the Planning Commission to Act to Recommend Approval or Disapproval of Council Bill Two Thousand and Twenty-four zero-seven zero-one.
Madam Clerk, I believe Bill Ten Eighty-Nine requires a roll call vote.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Mr. Coghill.
I'm lost too. I thought we were on.
This... I don't want to speak for you, Councilwoman.
It's for Bill Ten Eighty-nine. City Council's just ratifying my request last week for the Council Bill, uh, Two Thousand and Twenty-four Zero Seven Zero One, to receive an extension, um, of the time pursuant to the City Planning Commission's vote to grant the request for a, um, continuance.
Understood.
It's just, it's just something formal. We did it the other day, and it's just formalizing.
The Councilwoman asked the Planning Commission last week for, I believe it was a four-week extension, I believe.
Yeah, four-week extension.
Four-week extension, and this formally allows council to adopt that extension.
Aye.
It's still point of order. It's a new paper. So this is under new papers?
Yes. We did, it's, we did the same thing with Councilman, um, Charlin about a month ago when we extended the, uh, zoning in Oakland.
It's a new paper, it doesn't have the deadline. It just says...
If she wants me to go here, I'm gonna go here.
Pursuant to this section of code.
Sure.
A deadline. I don't, I don't remember doing this for Councilman Charlin, maybe I just forgot.
We did, um...
It was with the Oakland...
Did it for my bill too. It's very standard.
That we... We had to vote to bring it back.
Mr. Carter, you would help us out?
Good morning, Sean, Legislative Project Manager, Office of the City Clerk and City Council. The bill before you merely ratifies the written request Councilwoman Kelsmith made last week to the Planning Commission to continue the hearing on Bill Seven-O-One, which was originally scheduled for last Tuesday, but has now been moved to November the twelfth. Um, because the decision between the administration and Councilwoman Kelsmith occurred after the council meeting, they took her request, um, on her, on her request. But council needs to ratify that request, uh, in part for the paperwork for the file, and in part so that there's a written record from council grant, uh, requesting and/or consenting to the extension. And because it is a type of motion that could be made verbally, um, it is the type of resolution that can be passed upon its introduction. Thank you.
Thank you. Much better said than I could.
It's clear to me now, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gross?
Sean, Regie. No, I said, that's much clearer to me now, I appreciate it.
No, we're still, I'm sorry, we're still on roll call.
Oh, that was roll call, so on roll call. No.
Mr. Coghill.
Is this same bill, Ten Eighty-nine?
Yes.
Oh, I already registered, aye. Did I not? Aye again.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
He only gets one vote.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
Thank you very much. That takes us to Councilwoman Erica Strasburger, Chair of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Ten Sixty-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of Meyer, Ankabik, and Scott, LLP, for Expert Legal Services in Connection with Litigation Matter Filed in the Allegheny County Court of Common Pleas for an Amount Not to Exceed Ten Thousand Six Hundred Forty-Seven Dollars and Fifty Cent Over One Year. Bill Ten Sixty-eight, Resolution Amending Resolution Five Eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-four, which authorized the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the County of Allegheny for the Completion of Lead Safety Projects as Approved in the City of Pittsburgh's American Rescue Plan Act Allocation at a Cost Not to Exceed Six Hundred Thousand Dollars by Updating the Authorized Recipient to be the Redevelopment Authority of Allegheny County. And Bill Ten Sixty-nine, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Extend Existing Contracts with Financial Institutions Designated by Council to Act as Depositories for the City of Pittsburgh in two thousand and twenty-four by Extending the Contracts by One Additional Year Through Two Thousand and Twenty-Five as Permitted by Chapter Two Twenty-One Oh Nine of the City Code at No Cost to the City.
Councilwoman Strasburger.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to waive the rules of council through Bill Ten Sixty-eight appears on tomorrow's agenda.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Bill Ten Sixty-eight will be on tomorrow's agenda. That takes us to Councilwoman Warwick, Chair of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Number Ten Seventy, Resolution Authorizing the Director of the Department of Finance and the Director of the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to enter into certain temporary construction easements on certain properties in the Second Ward of the City in order to advance the Smithfield Street Project. Cost for these temporary construction easements shall not exceed ninety thousand dollars, reimbursable at eighty percent. Bill Ten Seventy-one, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of a Warrant in Favor of MC Enterprises for the Purpose of an Interior Renovation at Police Zone Four and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thorough of in an Amount Not to Exceed Five Thousand Eight Hundred and One Dollars Over One Year.
And Councilman Wilson, Chair of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number Ten Seventy-two, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreement with Agencies to Provide Emergency Shelter Services, Street Outreach Services, Rental Assistance, and Housing Relocation and Stabilization Services and/or Data Collection Activities as Associated with Two Thousand and Twenty-four Emergency Solutions Grant Funds at a Cost Not to Exceed One Million One Hundred Ninety-Five Thousand One Hundred and Four Dollars. Bill Ten Seventy-three, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Jewish Healthcare Foundation to Provide Administration and Operating Expenses, Housing and Housing-Related Supportive Services to Persons with HIV and AIDS and their Families, Total Cost Not to Exceed One Million Four Hundred Nine Thousand Eight Hundred and Thirty-Six Dollars. Bill Ten Seventy-four, Resolution Providing for an Agreement or Agreements with the Urban League of Pittsburgh for the Implementation, Administration of the Housing Counseling Program and Related Costs in Amount Not to Exceed One Hundred Thousand Dollars. Bill Ten Seventy-five, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Office of Management and Budget to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with Various Community-Based Organizations for the Implementation of the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Neighborhood Economic Development Program and to Provide for the Payment of the Costs Thorough of Cost Not to Exceed Seven Hundred and Twenty Thousand Dollars. Bill Ten Seventy-six, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Eight Fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Effective December Twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Budget, the Proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-four Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Through Two Thousand and Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program, so as to Grant Five Hundred and Forty Thousand Dollars to Specific Public Service Grant Projects and Authorize a Subsequent Agreement or Agreements. Bill Ten Seventy-seven, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Eight Fifty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, Effective December Twenty-seventh of two thousand and twenty-three, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Budget, the Proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-four Community Development Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Through Two Thousand and Twenty-nine Capital Improvement Program by Decreasing CDBG Personnel by One Hundred Two Thousand Ten Dollars, Increasing, Decreasing Emergency Solutions Grant by Four Thousand Eight Hundred Ninety-Six Dollars, Increasing Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS by Three Hundred Nine Thousand Eight Hundred and Thirty-Six Dollars, and Decreasing Home Investment Partnerships Program by Five Hundred Four Thousand Four Hundred Thirty-One Dollars. These Changes are made in Response to Program allocations by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development and Come at No Cost to the City of Pittsburgh.
And on behalf of myself, if we could begin with the two appointments?
Council President Lavelle presents Bill Number Ten Seventy-eight, Resolution Appointing, Resolution Appointment of Paul Scott as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with the Term to Expire October Fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-eight. Bill Ten Seventy-nine, Resolution Appointment of Omoy Ekahule as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission with the Term to Expire October First, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Thank you. We need either a motion to interview or to approve.
Motion to approve.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Both appointments have been approved, and now for our communications.
Bill Number Ten Eighty-one, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of Office of Management and Budget, Submitting to City Council the Attached Status Update from the Grants Office for the Week Ended October Eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Bill Ten Eighty-two, Communication from Patrick Cornell on behalf of Mayor Ed Gany and the Board of the City of Pittsburgh Municipal Pension Fund, Submitting an Updated Table of Conversion Factors for Survivor Benefits in accordance with Ordinance Eleven of two thousand and twenty-four. And Bill Ten Eighty-three, Communication from Jake Pollak, Director of the Office of Management and Budget, Submitting a Donation from the Trust for Public Land to the Department of City Planning for Participation of Three City Employees at the Trust for Public Land Park Equity Assessment Cohort Peer Visit in the Amount Not to Exceed Three Thousand Dollars.
And we need a motion to read, receive, and file?
No move.
Second.
Discussion, Councilwoman Gross?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a, just a, not really a point of order, but for the clerk's office. I just double-checked on Legistar. There's an attachment for Bill Two Thousand and Twenty-four, Ten Eighty-two that is actually relevant to Two Thousand and Twenty-four, Ten Eighty-three. So there's a, a communication to council on the Trust for Public Land that should be under the Trust for Public Land Bill and not the Municipal Pension Fund Bill. So... Can you just fix that on Legistar? I appreciate it, thank you.
Will do. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
You missed an appointment.
I did?
It's the informing.
Oh, okay. Um, so those have been read, received, and filed, and I was just informed by a clerk that I missed an informing appointment.
Bill Ten Eighty, Resolution Informing City Council of the Appointment of Sequoia Bay as a Member of the City-County Task Force on Disabilities with the Term to Expire October Fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-six.
And for that, we need a motion to read, receive, and file.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bill, we're read, receive, and file. That takes us to unfinished business. We have one appointment.
Bill Nine Eighty-seven, Resolution Appointment of Helena Procopio Ross as a Member of the Clean Pittsburgh Commission, Term to Expire September First, two thousand and twenty-eight.
Need a motion to approve?
No move.
No move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The appointment has been approved.
Can I just make, I just want to make one point. I do like that I'm seeing the Clean Pittsburgh Commission getting some new appointees. Maybe we'll get some different responses for across the city in different areas that haven't typically received them. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. The next order of business will be reports on committee for final action, beginning with Councilwoman Erica Strasburger presenting the Committee of Finance and Law.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilperson Strasburger presents Bill Number Ten Fifty-three, Reported a Committee on Finance and Law for October Sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill One Zero Zero Nine, Ordinance Amending the Pittsburgh Code of Ordinances, Title Five, Traffic, Article Seven, Parking, Chapter Five Fifty, Mobility Enhancement District, Section Five Fifty-Oh Four, Pilot Program, in Order to Extend the Pilot Program to Account for delays in Implementation of the Mobility Enhancement District. Bill Ten Thirteen, Resolution Transfer in the Amount of Ten Thousand Dollars Within the Two Thousand and Twenty-four Operating Budget from City Council Salaries and Wages Regular to Council as a Body for the Purpose of Professional Services. Bill Ten Fourteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor, the Director of the Office of Management and Budget and the Department of Mobility and Infrastructure to Enter into an Agreement or Agreements with the U.S. Department of Transportation for the Purpose of Receiving Grant Funds from the Charging and Fueling Infrastructure Program in the Amount of Two Million Three Hundred Ninety-Six Thousand Four Hundred Six Dollars and Fifty-One Cent to Support the City's Equitably Empowering EV Ownership in the City of Pittsburgh through Community Charging Infrastructure Project. The Grant Requires a Match from the City of Pittsburgh in the Amount of Thirty-Eight Thousand Nine Hundred Ninety-Seven Dollars and Eight Cent, the Parking, Pittsburgh Parking Authority, in the Amount of Ninety-One Thousand Dollars, and Duquesne Light in the Amount of Four Hundred Seventy Thousand Six Hundred Dollars for this Stated Purpose. Bill Ten Fifteen, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Six Forty-seven of two thousand and twenty, Effective December Twenty-third, two thousand and twenty, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Two Thousand and Twenty-one Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Twenty-one Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Twenty-one Through Two Thousand and Twenty-six Capital Improvement Program by Increasing South Side Signals by Four Hundred Thirty-Seven Thousand Six Hundred and Three Dollars to Account for Additional Federal Highway Administration Funding being Received by the City of Pittsburgh. Bill Ten Sixteen, Resolution Further Amending Resolution Eight Sixty-three of two thousand and eighteen, Effective January One, two thousand and nineteen, as amended and titled, Resolution Adopting and Approving the Cap Two Thousand and Nineteen Capital Budget and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Community Development Block Grant Program and the Two Thousand and Nineteen Through Two Thousand and Twenty-four Capital Improvement Program by Reducing Bus Rapid Transit by Fifty Thousand Dollars and Increasing Advanced Transportation and Congestion Management Technologies Development Administered as a Smart PGH Project by Fifty Thousand Dollars. Bill Ten Seventeen, Resolution Authorizing an Interdepartmental Transfer in the Amount of One Hundred Thousand Dollars from the Department of Human Resources and Civil Service to the Department of City Planning to Support Work Relating to Transit-Oriented Development in Homewood. And Bill Ten Eighteen, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Finance to Enter into an Agreement with Carnegie Mellon University for Real Estate Subdivision and Exchange involving Two Parcels Having Identification Numbers Eighty-N five-nine and Eighty-N eight, at no cost to the City.
You have heard the reading and the title of the bills. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Anthony Coghill presenting the Committee of Public Safety and Wellness.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Coghill presents Bill Ten Fifty-four, Reported a Committee on Public Safety and Wellness for October Sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Six Twenty-two, Ordinance Supplementing the Pittsburgh Code Title Six, Conduct, Article One, Regulated Rights and Actions by Adding Chapter Six Nineteen A, Entitled Quality of Life Violations. Bill Ten O-six, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of Public Safety on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh to Enter into One-Year Reimbursement Agreements with Six Local Youth Sports Organizations Cost Not to Exceed Ninety Thousand Dollars Over One Year. And Bill Ten O-seven, Resolution Authorizing the Mayor and the Director of the Department of Public Safety to Enter on behalf of the City of Pittsburgh into an Agreement or Agreements with Four-One-Two Paw, LLC for Professional Licensed Veterinary Services to the City's Department of Public Safety, Bureau of Animal Care and Control at an Overall Cost to the City Not to Exceed One Hundred Twenty-Four Thousand Dollars Over Four Years.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when your name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Where the clerk please take the roll.
Mr. Charland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kelsmith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasburger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us to Councilwoman Barbara Warwick presenting the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Warwick presents Bill Ten Fifty-five, Reported a Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure for October Sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four with an Affirmative Recommendation. Bill Ten Nineteen, Resolution Providing for an amended reimbursement agreement or agreements with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation for Costs Associated with the Construction Phase of the South Side Signals Project and Providing for the Payment of the Costs Thorough of not to exceed Four Million Seven Hundred Forty-Eight Thousand Five Hundred Fifty-Six Dollars an increase of $437,603 for an previously passed authorization reimbursable at 100%.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to Councilman Bobby Wilson, presenting the Committee of Land Use and Economic Development.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Councilman Wilson presents Bill Number 1056. Reported a committee on land use and economic development for October 16th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 221. Ordinance amending the Pittsburgh Code Title IX Zoning, Article 902.03 Zoning Map by changing from RMH Residential Multi-Unit High Density to UNC Urban Neighborhood Commercial certain properties located on Shady Avenue in the 7th Ward of the city of Pittsburgh known in the Allegheny County Office of Deed Registry as block and lot numbers 84G239 and a portion of 84G258.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bill, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
Aye.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero noes.
The bill has received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally, and that takes us finally to Councilman Cory Mosley, presenting the Committee of Intergovernmental Educational Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilman Mosley presents Bill Number 1057. Reported a committee on intergovernmental and educational affairs for October 16th, 2024 with an affirmative recommendation. Bill 1010. Resolution adopting the plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the Esplanade Project. The site is located on multiple parcels within Allegheny County in the 21st Ward of the city of Pittsburgh at no cost to the city. Bill 1011. Resolution adopting plan revision to the city of Pittsburgh's official sewage facilities plan for the following addresses: 1007 McCartney Street, 1017 McCartney Street, 420 Green Tree Road, 422 Green Tree Road, and 434 Green Tree Road at no cost to the city. Bill 1012. Resolution providing for cooperative agreement or agreements with the University of Pittsburgh Medical Center to reimburse expenses of UPMC incurred for public work at the intersection of Fifth Avenue and DeSoto Street related to the city's Smart Pittsburgh Project performed in the course of the completion of UPMC Presbyterian Bed Tower in an amount not to exceed $50,000. And Bill 1024. Resolution authorizing and directing the mayor and the Director of the Department of Finance to terminate the 1991 Cooperation Agreement between the city of Pittsburgh and county of Allegheny for the lease of the municipal courts building and further forthwith to grant and convey the municipal courts building to the county of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania or to any other interested party.
You've heard the reading and the title of the bill. Is there any discussion? If, no. Councilman Coghill? I believe you have an amendment. Yeah, we just read it.
Yeah, just read it.
Oh, you did. Okay, I'm sorry. I wasn't paying attention. Okay, so yeah, this amendment after-
He turned his mic on for that one.
I'm getting too old, I know. But after conversations with our president and Councilman Mosley, we felt best to add a six-month amendment to the sale of this building as to, you know, to send a report back from county and state as to where things are. It's not a drop deadline saying that it has to be sold in six months, but it's our first report as to where things are would be required from six months of the, hopefully, positive recommendation of this sale agreement of this building. That's all.
Thank you. So there's a motion to amend Bill 1024. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The amendment has been approved. Any further discussion on the bills? If not, the bill is now ready for final action. All in favor of the passage of the bills, vote aye when their name is called. Those opposed will vote no. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Mr. Sharland.
Aye.
Mr. Coghill.
Aye.
Ms. Gross.
No on Bill 1024. Aye on all the other bills.
Mr. Mosley.
Aye.
Mrs. Kail Smith.
Aye.
Mrs. Strasberger.
Aye.
Mrs. Warwick.
Aye.
Mr. Wilson.
Aye.
Mr. Lavelle President.
Aye.
Nine ayes on Bill 10, on Bills 1010, 1011, and 1012, and eight ayes, one no on Bill 1024.
The bills have received the legally required number of votes. It is passed finally. That takes us to motions and resolutions. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Yeah, I actually have a couple of things. First, I want to remind members that our guests here today are going to, they ask us to remain in chambers while they do a short presentation to let us know the work that they do in the Hindu community and across the city of Pittsburgh. So it'll just be a short presentation. And then I want to talk about the football program. I talked to, last week I made some comments about the football program and, you know, I still stay those same comments that, you know, we need to work with the communities on making sure we're doing the best thing in the neighborhoods. And I actually had a really good conversation with the football president after someone in the administration sent him the link to watch the meetings to see my comments, which I reiterated to him. So, I mean, it's not the way to work with me. But anyway, but I will say that he totally understands and he's trying to do some things to address the concerns of the community. But I also talked to the Director of City Parks and we tried to figure out ways that we can address issues there and in Townsend Park in Elliot. We replaced that park. We spent about a million dollars because we had to rebuild the roadway. And everything in that park, almost, I think it's just three, four years later, four years later, everything has been replaced at least once because of the damage and destruction that happens there. We need to have, if we're going to have, spend money on playgrounds, I wish we would also make sure we're using our park rangers in the best ways and maybe have them in the evenings with kids when they're around, in the summertime have them at the playgrounds, different places, so kids don't know when somebody's going to be there, but they'll have somebody to help engage with them and keep them occupied in a positive way. I just think we need to think about ways we're doing things when these things are happening, because it costs the city a lot of money. Then I also want to talk about the meeting with zoning last week. I want to thank Sean Carter and Dan Friesen. They are really amazing and they do a lot of great things for the city of Pittsburgh, but they've really helped me a lot and through this and through the other things that I worked with, including just today in the vote. So thank you very much for sharing all your information and knowledge with us. But I do want to say that during this time, the reason we asked for this four-week hold is because we had a meeting with the administration and we agreed with you there, Council President and Councilwoman Warwick, that we need to have some kind of public process, that we wanted to work through what that looks like, what the public process looks like. I still say we need a vote of elected officials, but I'm wanting to work through what the community feels comfortable with. But they, we sent an email requesting that the meeting be held. We sent it probably almost about a week ago, maybe a week tomorrow will be, that we requested that the meeting be held in the evening at, that's what the residents want, on the 12th. It's supposed to be scheduled in the evening. So we want the meeting in the evening in a larger space where people can, we can accommodate the volume of people that want to attend. During that meeting, I believe I was told there was about 260 people on the Zoom meeting, over 50 people in the room, over 200 to 300 people in the hallway, and hundreds of people were turned away downstairs and others couldn't get through on the phone line because it was so jammed. So it's obviously an issue at 2:00 in the afternoon that residents would come out on a weekday that they care about. So we owe it to them to give them that public process that they need. So I asked that they either, that they also send a letter, because I believe they should have sent a letter in the first place when you're changing zoning that significantly. They should have sent the letter. It shouldn't have had to come from me. So, but I did it because I also have my own zoning coming forward. So I just want to make sure that's clear. It wasn't in response to the administration. It was in response to things happening in my district. But now, because the two bills collide a little bit and affect one affects the other, that's why we're having this discussion. But I'm just going to say that if city planning, we haven't heard from them yet. So if we don't hear from them by 5:00 today, I'm going to host, and I'm not going to call for a public hearing. I'm going to call for a community forum and I'm going to send out a citywide letter to let people know that they need to come and this is the day we're going to have the meeting. I'm not going to have the community circumvented in this process. I want to make sure that they have a chance to voice their concerns. We need to hear from them. And then we need to draft whatever we think is the best response. I think we also need to do something. I think citywide, I think people, and countywide, people are trying to do the best they can to help people that are challenged with homelessness and, and I think it is a challenge. I think that no matter what the administration does, or no matter what council does, or the county exec does, there's going to be somebody who has some feelings about it and some, you know, angst about it sometimes. It may be a better solution or a better option. But I think when you have the conversations with the public, they do want to help people. I think that most, the majority of people want to help, but they want you to work with them and talk to them about how that, what that looks like in their own neighborhoods. And we owe it to them. We represent them. We're not supposed to come in and tell them we know better than them. We're supposed to represent what they want. That's what we're here for. So I just want to say that part. But last, I want to also ask, can I have a moment of silence? We lost Peggy Madigan, Peggy Cooney Madigan, who was really, she did a lot in the Irish community, especially Miss Smiling Irish Eyes. She was Oakland family, the Madigan family of Oakland, big, huge family, who does a lot across Allegheny County. And she married Bob Cooney and they moved to Westwood in my neighborhood. And Ken Gianella, who, some people call him Fish, he did the Mike Awards for Mount Washington and Duquesne Heights and did a lot of scholarships for Duquesne University for kids. Just both people did amazing things for the city of Pittsburgh, and I just want to do a moment of silence and offer our condolences to their families on their passing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anything else from members? Councilwoman Warwick, then Councilman Mosley?
I do want to say, so with regard to all the folks that came out, and I understand the concern about public process and, you know, and, you know, the inner workings of city planning are not necessarily something that, like, the public at large is keeping a close eye on. So I understand that, you know, folks want a say in the process, and we're working on that together. That said, I am so disappointed in the fact that we, you know, of all the city, of all the things that we work on in the city and at council, and all that we talk about this just really, what feels like the impossible problem of homelessness in this country and in every single city, like all over this country. And the amount of times we hear at council, at least I can say myself, is, you know, why can't we just get people off the streets? Why can't we just get people off the street? That, that the amount of, and I do want to remind folks that being homeless is not a crime, being homeless does not make you criminal. There are any number of reasons that people are experiencing homelessness today. And to see this number of people and the amount of vitriol and anger, and, I mean, you look at social media, just, I mean, downright nastiness coming from the city of Pittsburgh at the mere suggestion, right, that we are trying to do something to get homeless people into housing. It's very upsetting. I, I, it was disappointing to me. There's a lot of people here, and I, and we are not necessarily doing the best job we can do. I will acknowledge that first, you know. And, but I just hope that moving forward, we can have a conversation, and I mean the public. I mean the public. That we can have a conversation that, you know, puts empathy first and understanding that this is a complicated problem and that, you know, it may mean, like, if we are going to house people, we need to be able to house them, not all in one area, but really all over the city. And that that is how we get people off the streets, is that we put them into housing. So anyway, I do look forward to working with Councilwoman Smith as we go forward and the rest of council and the administration and, you know, Cory Lehman and all of that so that we can get to something that at least makes a small, you know, a small improvement in our ability to do what we need to do, which is get people out of tents on this, you know, out of tents off the street and into shelter so that they can start taking the steps to, you know, turn their lives around and get back to a place where they, you know, are, because you can't do anything. You can't get off drugs. You can't find a job. You can't, you know, any number to get mental health care if you are living on the street. You have to be housed first, and that's what housing first means. That's what that, that policy means. Anyway, that's all from me. Thank you.
I'm going to say something to the-
Thank you. Councilman Mosley?
Yeah, I just wanted to, in lieu of your acknowledgement of Judge Joe Williams retiring, I just want to congratulate him. You know, our families go way back, and he's one of those, one of those people, every time he sees me, he reminds me that he's known me longer than I've known myself. You know, he was a young man when my parents got married, bought a house in Manchester in the mid-'60s, 10 years before I was born. But, you know, we go way back and I, you know, consider him family. Unfortunately, I had a very important meeting in the community last night, so I couldn't make it to a celebration, but I look forward to celebrating with him and his wife Darryl in the near future. So congratulations, Judge.
Thank you. Indeed, we had a, he had a wonderful celebration yesterday. About 50 people or so showed up to Duquesne University to celebrate him, so it was really well. Councilman Coghill?
Thank you. I'd like to schedule a post-agenda regarding our Chief Scorato's, whether we call leave of absence or, you know, I got a lot of questions from my district and talking to some members. I got a lot of concerns, valid concerns, I think, and I also got a lot of members that want to give them the benefit of the doubt. So I'm, I find myself right in the middle. I find that we need to hear from Chief Scorato and decide, you know, how long is he going to be out? In what way is it going to affect his job? So I'm quite fond of Chief Scorato. I think he's doing a great job. I would hate to lose him. And obviously, he, you know, convinced the mayor that he can continue on doing his job, but I think he needs to convince council of that as well before we approve or not approve his salary for next year. So, so I did call for that. I would like to get on his schedule, you know, sooner than later because I know the season's starting for him and also budget season's coming up, so I would go with the availability of Chief Scorato and Director Schmidt and whoever else we decide to be there. So that's all. Thanks. We'll coordinate with the Clerk's Office.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We will work with the Clerk's Office and obviously your office, Councilman Coghill, to get that scheduled. Councilwoman Kail Smith?
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Councilwoman Warwick for her comments. I don't think that anybody wants anybody to say anything. We don't want to encourage the negative. We do want to encourage conversation. But I will say that also in my, for my district, we don't just say we don't want a project. We say here's where it will work better. Here's how we can work through this concern. And I really think the anxiety and the feelings a lot of people are expressing come from our poor management of facilities across the city of Pittsburgh and actually across Allegheny County. I think a lot of people don't have confidence in our ability to manage properties, and they've seen what happened in other places, and I think, and they're seeing what happens downtown. And I do think we need to get people off the streets. I'm the, I'm probably one of the people that advocate that, for that constantly, because I think we have to do something. But I think doing something doesn't mean you steamroll the people you represent. It means you sit down and say, look, this is the issue. How can we make you feel comfortable with these decisions? And it's just conversation. I think once we have that, I think you're going to see a different, I hope you'll see a response where people are saying, this is where something will work. This is what we need to do here. This is what we need to do there. This is, I think, management companies matter. I think that the, people don't want to see their children or theirs, themselves, or their lives also affected negatively. There's a lot of people in our communities that also suffer from mental health and disorder and various disorders and addictions and other things, that they also don't want to be put at risk in their own communities. So I think it's trying to understand what's going on in the neighborhood and how we can best address those issues. to understand what's going on in the neighborhood and how we can best address those issues. So, I'm, I'm really hopeful that we're going to have those conversations of working with people. And I do think, and I want to say, I think it's a monumental task for the administration and for Sarah Annamorato. I think that they have a, have a big challenge, but that doesn't mean we can do that without excluding, with, by excluding the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, Councilman Coghill?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on the, um, municipal courts building. First of all, I want to thank members for supporting that. Uh, be on a shadow of doubt. It's the right thing to do. This is not an asset. It's a liability, more like an anchor. But I did want to bring to the attention that this needs immediate injection of funds, one way or the other, just for the working conditions and the health and safety of the people that are staying, that, that have to work there every day. There's offices without heat, air conditioning. There's, um, still water with mold and fountains. So, I'll follow up with you, Mr. President, as to, uh, you know, we need, obviously, we're going to own this building for the next six months. I, I hope it doesn't linger on further than that, but, um, we need to invest in, into this property. And, and I understand why we haven't made major investments into this property, because why would we, right? So, so, uh, so I just want to speak to the conditions in this place. Turns out, we're not very good landlords, I will tell you. Um, in this case, I can understand why we've been neglect, neglecting the upkeep of this place, but we need to do something there for the health and safety of the conditions of the people that have to go there every day. So, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Councilman Sharland?
Uh, thank you, Council President. Uh, I know we've had a robust discussion today, um, but I would be remiss, uh, October 22nd is a very important day in Pittsburgh. Uh, today happens to be the birthday of, uh, of Jeff Goldblum. Uh, also happens to be the birthday of Heath Miller, our star tight end. Does anyone else know any other birthdays that might be falling today?
Is it your birthday, Councilman?
I think, uh, I think the most important Pittsburgher, Councilman Coghill, turns, uh, 58 today?
58, right.
Yeah. So, happy birthday, Councilman. Thank you for, uh-
To me.
-for helping me over here. I appreciate it.
Happy birthday, Councilman.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I really hate being the old one here.
Anything else from members? If not, meeting announcements this afternoon at 1:00. Council will hold an executive session on Bill 1067 as relates to litigation matters. Tomorrow, Wednesday, October 23rd, council will hold a pre-agenda interview at 9:30 a.m. with the standing committee meeting at 10 a.m. Speaker registration will close at 9 a.m. Also, Wednesday at 2:30, council will hold a cablecast public hearing on Bill 819 as relates to zoning in East Liberty. Registration closes at 1 p.m. the day of the hearing. To register to speak at any of these meetings, please fill out a sign-up form on the council meeting webpage or Carter Clerk's Office at 412-255-2138. All are present, so we need a motion to approve the minutes and adjourn the meeting.
So move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.